I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the Rockwood Board of Education meeting. We would like to thank the administrative team and all the staff and students at Lafayette High School for being gracious hosts for our meeting this evening. Thank you also to the ambassadors who are here from our schools to assist with greeting and signing in our guests. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct the business of the district, hear reports about our progress, and listen to the community on important issues. We want to remind all of our visitors that we expect the audience to remain civil and respectful at all times as the board conducts its business. Calling out verbal aggressiveness, inappropriate language, or name-calling is not acceptable. If the meeting becomes unruly, the board may take a recess until such time the audience is appropriate. If inappropriate behavior continues by individuals, they may be asked to leave the meeting. If the audience becomes so inappropriate in their behavior that we can't conduct our business, the board reserves the right to adjourn the meeting. This Board of Education meeting is livestreamed for the community's convenience. Opinions expressed at the meeting are not necessarily the opinions of the Rockwood School District. YouTube reserves the right to monitor and block inaccurate and misleading content. That process is beyond the control of the Rockwood School District. We want everyone to have the ability to see and have the ability to hear the business of the district, reports presented, and the comments of everyone who is here to speak. We request that all individuals speak slowly and clearly. We appreciate your cooperation and that you took the time to attend tonight's meeting.
Could I please have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. Next, could I have a motion to approve Board of Education meeting minutes for the June 8, 2023 Board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion of that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. Next, could I have a motion that Chief Financial Officer Cynthia Bias serve as the treasurer of the Rockwood School District for the 2023-24 fiscal year?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. Next, we have our first patron comment period. Sorry about that. I am going to, we have two patron comments for agenda items. I'm going to read this before we get started. During patron comments, Rockwood patrons may address the Board of Education concerning issues related to the school district. Under our current policy, there are now two patron comment sections during regular board meetings. The first public comment period shall be solely for patron comments related to items on tonight's agenda, which will be limited to 30 minutes. The second public comment period shall occur at the end of the meeting order of business and shall be for patrons to make a statement or address the board concerning any issues pertaining to the Rockwood School District. Please know that patrons also have the opportunity to submit comments and writing to the board at any time. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Combining time or giving your time to someone else to speak is not allowed. Only one speaker is allowed at the podium at a time. The board uses the public comment periods as an opportunity to listen and receive information, but board members will not engage in debates or discussions with those speaking other than to seek clarification of their comments if necessary. A board member may ask that the superintendent ensure that the appropriate staff member follows up in a timely fashion with the individual regarding the information, question, or concern presented during patron comments. We have a stand with microphone ready, so both the board and the audience may hear the patron comments clearly. I would like to remind everyone that comments about individual employees and/or students will not be permitted in public session. We also expect that you will remain civil and respectful in your remarks, and if anyone becomes disruptive, we reserve the right to cut your three minutes short. Verbally aggressive language and vulgarity in any form is not acceptable. Whether you're reading someone else's remarks or they are your own, it will not be tolerated. The board appreciates that you have taken the time to come this evening, and we value both your input and your perspective. For your convenience, our three-minute time clock is ready. We welcome Sally Nickel to the podium.
My name is Sally Nickel. I am a parent and resident of Rockwood School District, as I think many of you know now because I've been pretty regular. I'm here tonight for comments regarding Policy 0411 and 0412. Regarding 0411, for community members to be able to have items added to the official agenda, I would like to ask, I don't know if it can be added to the policy or in how the policy is applied, but if there could be a consideration for submitting that form other than printing it out and sending it in for our folks in our community who don't have access to printers or scanners, such that they can still access that process without having those means, whether that's an email to a certain person, or if there could be a phone proxy that they could call in and have someone fill that out on their behalf. Regarding Policy 0412 for patron comments at board meetings, I've been attending meetings pretty regularly for about a year and a half now. I've seen a wide variety of behaviors, as have you. I thought it was really impressive when we split our comments to on-agenda at the start for the agenda business of the meeting and non-agenda comments to the end, so that it didn't interfere with the regular business of that meeting. I thought that was a very intelligent and open-minded way to meet the needs of the board as well as the community members. The current suggestion for revising that policy, I have concerns about how getting rid of non-agenda comments will result in the needs of our community to be able to communicate openly to the board. As any good educator will tell you, classroom management relies on having good policies and procedures, especially policies and procedures that consider the needs of the students and the teachers. I've listened to the discussions you guys have had over the last few meetings on this policy, and I do hear that our current system isn't meeting some of your needs. I don't presume to know what those are. We haven't had those discussions, but I would like to ask that you table this policy for right now and have some meetings or discussions with community members, and yes, I do volunteer, so that we can craft a revision to this policy that meets your needs and the community members' needs, to have a method that is easily accessible for comments that may not warrant being put on the agenda through Policy 0411. Thank you.
The next speaker is Ben Murray.
When roadblocks are added to make it difficult for stakeholders to be heard, it has chilling effects for the entire community, regardless of whether the comment is constructive criticism, feedback, or simply a positive comment to say thank you to the many amazing Rockwood employees, administrators, and Board of Education, like the open comment I made 364 days ago. And there are already rules in place to help minimize disruptive comments in the open period. If the changes in PINS 0411 and 0412 were already in effect, most of my comments last year would never have been allowed. One agenda-related comment I made would have been possible, assuming I was able to be among the first 10 people to sign up for that meeting. I worry that when this goes into effect, it would create a race to sign up for agenda comments, including people who sign up for an agenda comment but only loosely reference it while mostly speaking about something completely unrelated. And there are other issues and loopholes like this as well. Removing the open comment period will prevent a majority of polite, relevant, and appropriate comments from ever occurring, and this includes viewpoints I do not agree with, but I believe have the right to be heard as much as anyone else. Chilling effects are made worse due to a lack of clarity for the tedious process to get an agenda item added that some members of the community will not be able to complete due to various disabilities, challenges, and other factors. And the language on the form is also biased towards people with a background in education and the administration of education, because there's a lot of terminology that somebody like me just isn't quite sure all the nuances and meanings of. So I ask the board to reconsider the removal of an open comment period. The Missouri statute being referenced for PINS 0411 and 0412 already has its requirements met by adding the process to get an item added to the agenda. But the statute in question says nothing about removing open comments periods, so it's not clear why these two different things are being conflated into one. The intent of the Missouri statute, as I read it, is to ensure that stakeholders have the ability for public participation at school board meetings. So the removable, the removal of the open comment period will lock some people out of this process entirely, make it more difficult for others, and open up new loopholes to be abused by other people. So overall, the removal of open comments is poor optics and appears to go against both the intent and spirit of the law being referenced for this change. Thank you.
And next, we have Superintendent and Board Comments, Dr. Kane.
Thank you, President Hayes. For the fourth year in a row, all four Rockwood School District high schools have earned the Distinguished School designation from Project Lead the Way. Eureka, Lafayette, Marquette, and Rockwood Summit are among 262 high schools from around the nation and 25 from the state of Missouri to be named Distinguished Schools, a designation that recognizes schools that are committed to increasing student access, engagement, and achievement in Project Lead the Way courses. Rockwood offers an assortment of biomedical sciences, engineering, and computer science courses that align with Project Lead the Way standards. Project Lead the Way courses provide transformative learning experiences for students and for our teachers through courses that cultivate an engaging, hands-on classroom environment in STEM subjects. Nearly 1,800 Rockwood students enrolled in Project Lead the Way courses during the 2023-22-23 school year, and nearly 1,000 at the high school, and again, 800 at the middle school. Eureka Elementary, Green Pines Elementary, and Lafayette High School have been recognized for enacting promising practices in their schools by Character.org, a national organization that advocates for character education in schools and in communities. The Rockwood Schools initiatives are among 177 from around the nation and 22 from the state of Missouri that have been certified by Character.org as unique, effective initiatives that inspire goodness and inaction and contribute to the field of character development. Character.org will honor each of the 2023 Promising Practices recipients at its national forum, which will be held on November 6 and November 7 in Washington, DC. Congratulations to these school communities. Nearly 130 Rockwood School District students representing all four district high schools earned the Missouri Seal of Bileiteracy or Distinguished Missouri Seal of Bileiteracy recognition this school year. The Missouri Seal of Bileiteracy is awarded to graduating high school students in districts with a DESI-approved program, and these are also students that have demonstrated achievement in English and a language other than English, as well as social-cultural competence. All Missouri students studying any of the world's languages are potential SEAL candidates, according to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. A total of 964 students across the state earned the Seal of Bileiteracy in 2022. This year, Rockwood students earned a seal in a variety of languages, including Spanish, French, Latin, Polish, Russian, Tagalog, and Thai. A total of 14 students earned the Distinguished Missouri Seal of Bileiteracy, recognizing students who have shown an advanced level of proficiency in at least two languages. Congratulations to all of these students. My second-to-last comment will be this. Over the decades, Rockwood schools have provided countless families with warm and welcoming places for their students to learn and to grow. Our Rockwood Generations video series tells the story of these families, specifically families that have enjoyed multiple generations in the Rockwood School District, not only the district in terms of education, but experiences that have helped to make Rockwood one of the premier school districts in the state of Missouri, and I believe in this nation. The latest installment, the Baylog family, now it's in its second generation here in the Rockwood School District. Let's watch.
Hey, I'm Brad Baylog. I am a Lafayette High School graduate, and in addition, I teach here at Lafayette High School and at Rockwood Valley Middle School.
I am Lexi Baylog. I went to Babler Elementary, Rockwood Valley Middle School, and now I'm a senior at Lafayette.
I'm Kaylee Baylog, and I went to Babler Elementary, and now I'm a seventh grader at Rockwood Valley Middle School.
Hi, I'm Jen Baylog, and I went to Selvage Middle School. I graduated from Lafayette High School, and now I am a special education teacher at Crestview Middle School.
We have all gone to school in Rockwood, and now we've been teaching our entire careers in Rockwood. Jen's 24 years at Crestview, and I'm 23 years here. Just, we've had great, great experiences, whether it's as students or as teachers. My big thing was that I was involved in everything and anything music. It's no surprise, being that I'm a music teacher now. It has led me to make lifelong friends. Family is now doing music. Lexi's senior flute player and going into music education at Truman State. Kaylee is a trumpet player at Rockwood Valley, and Jen used to dabble in piano.
I'm the odd man out.
It's just, we've been so involved, and as a high school band director, our schedule is so incredibly busy. Jen has always been amazing from the day the girls were born.
Both of our girls have been to football games to watch the marching band as tiny little babies all bundled up in the cold, like sitting in the stands. So I mean, it's just been a part of our life. Our brother-in-law is one of the football coaches here, and so like those Friday night football games are like an extended family affair with my sister and her kids and my brother-in-law's family and Brad's parents and my parents.
We don't talk about graduation in our house. It's special, of course. It's special to watch them go through new experiences that we maybe didn't have the opportunities to do, that Rockwood has, you know, developed and changed over the years. And it's been neat to see them experience a lot of the things we got to do as well. As far as graduation goes, me joking that we're not talking about it. It's, yeah, I mean, it really is because we're going to miss her going on to even bigger and better things that Rockwood has gotten her prepared for. But that first day for me, and when I start summer band and she's not there, that's going to be, it's going to be an interesting day.
Me too. You're weird, and I should go with you.
It'll be weird because I ride the bus here every day, and then liking it, I'm a freshman, to actually like be at the school instead of not just riding the bus. I'd say that doesn't go to the school, but be a kid at the school. It'll be weird.
The biggest thing is just like enjoy it, let yourself enjoy it, you know, because it goes by really fast. Like, I know everybody says that, but like I didn't fully comprehend it. Part of high school, like high school is preparing you for college. You don't have to make high school your college. Like, just leave time for the things you enjoy. Don't, don't like shut those things out of your life because you think you have to.
We want them to go and experience life and make friends and lifelong friends and get new experiences that they can carry. I'm, we, some of our most fun was high school and college, and some of our best memories and our best friends. And through all those experiences, not only does the education prepare you, but the life experiences that you get prepare you as well.
And I think also the big thing we've talked about with Lexi going to college is just to like trust your heart and find the thing that you're passionate about and follow that.
Let's give the Baylog family a round of applause. So this is the last school board meeting for the 2022-23 school year, which means the folks that have the pleasure of sitting on this stage go through a great deal, not only in terms of frequency count, but just to prepare for the board meetings themselves, not just our Board of Education, who clearly invests countless hours in doing so, but also senior staff in the district that do so as well. So I just want to briefly, this is completely on the fly here, but I want to acknowledge the contributions of three cabinet members that will be leaving the Rockwood School District. So Northington, this will be, I believe, this will be your last budget update to the district here. No, Dr. Council's not with us, but for her time in the district as well, want to wish them both nothing but the best for what they've done. And Deb Kettering, I believe you've been attending board meetings since 2005?
Yes.
So we're not going to run the numbers, because that's not going to be a small number, but that's a lot of board meetings. These folks have helped keep it all together as we've moved forward as a district, as well as others, and I see Dr. Trottier in the, in the audience, that helped keep the district moving forward. And we should be very proud of where we stand as a district, and it's all because of the people in the Rockwood School District. So I just wanted to acknowledge you all for your contribution and wish you all nothing but the best in the future. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. Any board comments this evening?
Well, I'd like to thank the board and the district. I had the opportunity with a couple of the other board members to attend the Ignite Conference, which is the Missouri School Board Association meeting, and it was, it's always enjoyable to meet colleagues and talk and compare notes and learn. We had the opportunity, I attended, particularly attended the safety sessions and sessions on the new IMSIP in governance and how it'll affect us as board members. I'll let some of the other board members share some of the things they did, but it's a wonderful opportunity. I encourage all of the board members to get their calendars set for next year and also to look at the conference, the state conference that'll be held in Kansas City in November. It's a, it's a great learning opportunity for all of us, so thank you so much.
I agree with that. It was a wonderful conference. We got to really have conversations with districts of, you know, various sizes and to come together and know regardless of if you're 21,000 or 3,000, we're dealing with some of the same issues and kind of talking about how they're dealing with it on a smaller scale, and it was very insightful. They had a few amazing speakers. One, if you have not heard of Dr. Jacqueline Sanderland, she is amazing. She's an author, she's a speaker, but she talked about winning with the five Cs, and that was building community, collaboration, capacity, connection, and creativity. And I mean, it was just powerful, and everybody in the room could agree, like those are things that are important to the community and really focusing on that and again, always focusing on our students and how they're going to thrive. I think she didn't call them students, she called them scholars, you know, always identifying them as scholars. If you have a chance to kind of look her up and her work, it is fantastic and it's worth looking at. And I do agree, everybody should have that experience because it allows us to kind of refocus and remember why we do what we do. So it was, it was, it was energizing, and I'm glad we got to go.
Thank you both. Any other board comments? All right, then, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as submitted?
Motion.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion?
I've got, hold on.
Sure.
Thank you. I've got one comment, and that is, as was mentioned here, we have several policies we're going to be approving today as part of the consent agenda. The impetus, and we talked about this at our last board meeting, the impetus for this is the change in the state law and also an effort on our part to make the process better. One of the things I want to point out that the state law did, both to the board and to the community as a whole, is it did allow school boards, or in fact encouraged school boards is the way I would say it, to require residents to first meet with the superintendent or the superintendent's destiny to attempt to resolve the issue first. As Dr. Kane spoke at our last board meeting, that is something that I think is critical to the policies we're trying to implement here, and that is to get the action to the right place first, rather than making a stop at the board just to make a stop at the board before we then turn it over to the administration to handle. So that is something I would like to address with the community. As the president mentioned at the start, nothing in her opening comments, actually, for the overall patron comments, nothing in these policies prevents a patron from communicating directly with the school board. All right? In fact, looking at my own email, just in the three months I've been on the board, and yes, Tammy, it has already been three months, I know, I can tell you, I have far more comments in my email than we have had open comments in the speaker portions of these meetings. Now, having said that, I would like to encourage us as a board to take a look as these policies go into effect three months, six months from now, and ask ourselves the tough question, is this policy doing, are these policies, rather, doing what we intended? Are they meeting the objectives of ourselves and the community? And if so, great. But if not, let's be open to changing them again. Because one of the things I would like to encourage us all is not to meet the minimum standard the state sets. After all, we're Rockwood. We know we can do better. Thank you.
Did you have something, Tammy?
Yes.
I'd like to just add the, draw our attention to the public gifts again. This is, we have a very generous community. At Levins PTO, they purchased a new record board for their, for their gym. They, there's an anonymous, and this is one that the community just rises to the occasion at Marquette High School, Werther Elementary, as a monetary donation to assist in the negative balance for eligible students for lunch. And at Ridge Meadows, they purchased new audio equipment for their school. And at Eureka Elementary PTO, purchased the equipment for their PE department. And we just want to say thank you for going above and beyond for all that you do for the students of our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. Any other comments? I just want to piggyback a little bit, Bob, on your comment, and reiterate too, that there will be regulations that come along with these policies that can certainly tidy up any accessibility pieces or things of that nature. So I just wanted to address that as well. So the, let me flip back. Where was I? Motion is to, sorry, everyone, flipped too many pages. Motion to approve the consent agenda items as submitted. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. Next, we have item number 8.01, bond issued purchases and related contracts. Could I have a motion to approve the bond issued purchases and related contracts over $150,000 from Worldwide Technology for replacement of network switches?
So moved.
Motion and a second. Welcome, Deb Kettering, for the final time.
Thank you. So as you said, this is to allow us to upgrade and replace aging switches. It will allow us to ensure that our network is reliable and will meet our needs over the next several years. It will include classroom switches and backend switches.
Thank you, Deb. Any questions? All right, so that motion is to approve the bond issued purchases and related contracts over $150,000 from Worldwide Technology for replacement of network switches. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Next, I'd like to welcome Dr. Trottier and Dr. Whisker up to the stage. Could I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the master plan for professional learning as a fundamental framework for the Rockwood Professional Development Program for 2023-24?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Welcome.
Hello, good evening to all of you. Thank you for being here. My name is Renee Trottier. I am the Director of Learning Development for one more week. Not excited at all. And I just really, since we have a couple of new directors, just wanted to explain a little bit why we're here. And so in state statute, I believe it's the Outstanding Schools Act, states, the statute says that the Professional Development Committee needs to present a master plan to the school board, and the school board should approve that each year. And so it's historically been on the document. And so it's historically been on the docket for the November meeting, and since before I got here, we've presented at that time. And Dr. Kane said, looked at that and said, why are we voting on something in November when the school year's already began? And he really wants the board to see and vote on that master plan before it's put into effect. And that really just makes a lot of sense. And so that's why we're here, even though we were just here in November. Typically, what we do, if there's not been a lot of changes, which there hasn't at this point, is every other year we present, and then every other year it goes in consent. But Dr. Kane asked us to give just a short presentation so that we would be available to answer any board questions. And so, since tomorrow is my last day in the office, Donnette Whisker, our Coordinator of Professional Learning, will be here next year. She and I have met with Dr. Carrie Skeeters, who'll be replacing me a couple of times, so she's actually very familiar with, with what's in here as well. And so I thought I would just let Dr. Whisker present, and then I'll just be up here to help answer any questions.
So since we do have some new directors, we're going to kind of go over a little bit of background information, but I'll go quickly, but please stop me if you have any questions. So this slide just talks about and links into Missouri Professional Learning Guidelines. So the guidelines that we use to guide our work in our office actually come from several places. And one of those places is the state of Missouri. So they have very clear guidelines, as Renee stated, you know, a lot of the work we do is in statute, it's in the Outstanding Schools Act. And so really what those Missouri State Guidelines say is that professional learning must be directly related to our Comprehensive School Improvement Plan, which it is. I'll talk in a little bit, everything we do is connected to the way forward. As we move and develop a new plan, any work we do will then be connected directly to that plan. Obviously, we're, it's consistent with the vision and goals of our district program and our district. The other thing is that it's tied to identified learning needs. So one of the things we really make sure and do is that everything that we do, not only is it connected to the Comprehensive School Improvement Plan, it's also connected to learning needs that are identified through a variety of sources. So sometimes those needs are identified through learning, our needs assessments from our staff, sometimes they're identified through data that's been collected and is then analyzed or reviewed by committees like the RLC or different departments within the district. And so that's kind of what drives everything that we do. The two key points at the bottom of this list, and what we really always stay focused on, is professional learning is only as powerful as the impact it has on students in the classroom. And so one of the guides here is that it really has to lead to improvement in teaching practice, with the ultimate goal being that it's going to lead to improved student performance. Yes?
Can I ask a question there? So as you identify learning needs, how broad is that statement? And let me give you two spectrums of where my head goes. One is, I'm teaching a subject, and pick whatever subject you like, mathematics, and I have a problem adding. Clearly, I need to have a little remedial work there, getting better at adding if I'm teaching mathematics. Versus, I'm teaching mathematics, and I just don't want to be good at integral calculus, I want to be great at integral calculus. Is that a need?
So I think where we're, where professional learning is going to come in, and when we develop programs for teachers, is that what we provide for them is ways to meet students' needs across that spectrum, whether they're, obviously, we want to make sure that every student in Rockwood is able to, you know, be successful, meet the criteria within their content, either the standards set by the state or the district. But also, in that sense, I think, you know, parents or that student would argue it's a need, you know, I want to grow, I want to develop, I want to be my best. So we really work to provide teachers, one of the things that improvement of teaching practice is giving teachers the tools to extend lessons, to differentiate learning, to kind of provide, the curriculum department works really hard to provide lots of opportunities for, you know, both students who struggle and students who might need acceleration. You know, there's all sorts of programs and plans in place. That's out of the purview of our department, but we definitely work then to support them with teacher, to support teachers, and how can you meet the needs of all your students?
I would have to move that. Part of it, let me mention that there's a needs assessment for staff. So a staff member also identifies their own needs. So in addition to the needs of students, they do say, and, and that is the number one thing they say, is they want professional learning in their content area, so that is primarily what's delivering.
Yeah, that's actually, if we go further into the presentation, what I'd like to understand is, how do we address professional learning specifically in the content area of teachers? And frankly, I'd like to see some statistics on how do we do that by subject area, not by teacher. Don't want to get into anybody's privacy, but what, whether it's history, whether it's math, whether it's the fine arts area, how, what content-specific professional development are we doing for those areas for our teachers? I'd like to see that in the future, if I could.
So obviously, I already mentioned, this is the way forward, which most of you are familiar with. We focus most of our effort on the top three areas there. That's where a lot of our learning and training comes into student academic achievement, character well-being, universal equity, opportunity access, and then also that final S, strong leadership. So those are kind of the main areas of the Comprehensive School Improvement Plan that we focus on. So then also, on this slide, the other thing that guides us, and you can't see the heading up here, but it's the Outstanding Schools Act requirement. So that's where we talk specifically about the Outstanding Schools Act and what that requires of us. And so, school districts must establish a Professional Development Committee. We have one of those, has about 50-plus teachers, representatives from across the district. We meet pretty much monthly during the school year and do a lot of the work that's kind of laid out here. They work, we provide a plan of professional learning for teachers first two years, that's a big part of the work that I do. We provide mentor training for our mentor teachers. We have guidelines that are aligned with the state guidelines that are provided and then submitted at the end of the year. Then you'll see, we've got the 1% of state funds, we've got collaborative process between PDC and administration, with the approval of the school board on expenditure. You guys have already approved our budget, but working collaboratively with all those groups, obviously back to meeting the objectives of the CSIP, and then those teacher standards. So if you were to take one of our book studies this summer, for instance, when you're in there, you would see that it tells you which of the teacher evaluation instrument standards it's aligned to, to help support teachers in their own professional growth and development. Now, not only do we have some state kind of support and regulations that we follow, but you also see here, the role of PDC is actually within our regulations. So Regulation 4111 talks all about the role of the PDC. And you'll see it mirrors a lot of the things that come out of the state requirements, it mirrors a lot of those, and kind of what does PDC do? So, you know, that needs assessment, we talked about, kind of identifies those needs. That assessment is broken down by content area, it's shared with content coordinators so that they can then kind of think about what, what might the people in my content area specifically need. It's also shared with principals and administrators so they can look and see what teachers in their building might need, where there might be some gaps. We also look at it big picture-wise, you know, one thing that jumps into mind that we've got some things around this summer is student behavior. After COVID, that was something that people addressed as a need, you know, we really want to support our students, we want to make the transition smooth, we want them to be successful, we need help with that. So then we put things into place.
On the makeup of your PDC, you also have parent representation still as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
What happens is that we'll reach out and we work with Presidents Forum, and then they'll send us a representative. Yep. So then, the last thing, or this, that I want to share with you before I get into the new updates, is just that then within, at the PDC level, when we got the new CSIP, we also did a program review, and we'll do another program review next year to evaluate how we're being successful, how we can improve. As you probably know, you know, many things in education have changed since 2017, when we came up with these belief statements. And so we're going to go back and reevaluate those this next year. But really, this is what do we, this was generated by our PDC members, so teachers, counselors, parents, what do we believe about professional learning? And so whenever we're developing professional learning, whenever we talk about how we deliver professional learning, we're always going to come back to these belief statements, which are rooted in research. We did a lot of research, teachers read a lot of articles, looked at, you know, studies to find out what do we need to make sure that when we provide professional learning, it's high quality, it meets teachers' needs, and it moves student, students forward, it's supporting students. So then, that little bit of background about how we kind of, how we work, what drives us forward, leads us into some of the updates that we made for next year. Really pretty minor, we're expecting a little larger overhaul next year, as we, again, develop a new Comprehensive School Improvement Plan. We will do work to mirror that and to support that, you know, that collaborative effort. But for this year, as I talked about all those changes, our National Organization Learning Forward, it's actually an international organization for professional learning, they updated their standards recently. So we'll look at those standards next year to help them support our own. The master plan reflects the department reorganization. We're going to have the opportunity next year to work more closely with curriculum under the Director, Director of Curriculum and Professional Learning. So, you know, the questions about content and those sorts of things, hopefully we'll really be able to forge an even stronger relationship between, you know, professional learning and curriculum. There were conversations in the master plan, previously, we pretty much were not using any substitutes. Next year, we're really working, that was one thing we heard from teachers, we need substitutes, we need to be able to meet with, you know, our content area peers across the district, we need to be able to, I work primarily with new teachers, they need to be able to see master teachers in action, they need to be able to, you know, kind of see, what does that look like? You know, you can tell me about it, but unless I see it in action, it's really hard for me to replicate. The full-day strands that we put into place are just kind of morphing and changing into summer contract days and workshops. So we talked a little bit about that previously, but that's full steam ahead, we've got people registered, we've got people taking, right now, they're still taking summer workshops for pay, and in July, they'll be taking both summer workshops for, to fulfill their contract and for pay. We've got a, I mean, it grows every day, we're well over 150 sessions that we've got going on, so lots of good things happening in our department. The updated budget is included in the master plan, which you've already approved, and then finally, just those mentor-mentee guidelines, which as I stated earlier, are directly taken from the state guidelines. The state of Missouri pretty clearly lays out what the expectations are for mentors to support new teachers. So obviously, we do whatever it takes, it's all about the students and supporting teachers so that they can support students.
I have a couple of questions, if I could. As we fund, and I'm not sure whether this, we go to you or Paul, as we fund professional development, does that go through the principals, or does that go through the content coordinators, or neither?
So it kind of depends. There's a couple of places that it can go. So our office has a budget that funds a lot of like general professional development that's applicable to all content areas. So, you know, again, I, I mentioned some of the summer learning we're doing, whether it's around student behavior, whether it's around social-emotional learning, trauma-informed care, wide variety of topics that really benefit all teachers. That's one kind of section. Then there's also curriculum departments, they have their own budget in those content areas, and they develop, obviously, you know, Renee and I have both been involved in classrooms, but we need those content area experts, they're developing either their own workshops, or they're working with outside experts in their content area to develop that.
So as you, as you think about that, I'm going to ask the awkward question, do you have enough money?
Never.
Never? Is that the right answer?
Yes. Actually, our finance department's amazing, and we do have enough funds, we are, we do exceed what's required of the state when you look at, at everything that's available. And so, you asked about principals, so principals have a little bit in there, but they actually, they get a grant, if you looked at our budget, you'll see probably 25% of it, 20% of it goes to buildings. But they have to have a plan that's connected to their school improvement plan, that's connected to the district's school improvement plan. So they apply through us, and then each elementary gets 2,000, each middle gets four, or each middle gets three, and each high school gets four. And then we make sure that it's in line with the state statute, the 1% funds, there's, there's rules around that. And because that's part of our 1% funds, we, and because we want to make sure that it's connected to their school improvement plan and, and the district, then we, we actually sign off on those. So that is a collaborative effort between the principal and their PDC reps, and so that's how that works. And then there's also departments like the, your Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, your Director of Equity, Access, and Opportunity, those, those departments have their own budgets as well. So sometimes, like for curriculum and for those other departments, we actually just organize things so that teachers get one message and they have one place, and we keep track of all of that, but we don't necessarily plan their professional learning. So the master plan that you're approving is really a structure. It doesn't have in there, here are the workshops that we're doing.
Right.
And that's why, because those workshops really are identified based on the district's school improvement plan and the student data needs, as well as the, as well as the teacher needs. And those needs, I couldn't tell you right now, there'll be something that will come up in February because it's an identified need. So I couldn't tell you in June necessarily what's happening in February because we're, it's always going to be morphing and changing based on those needs.
So as, as, as we look at that, I would think we would have some commonalities across like schools. So for example, high school teachers would probably have like needs more than a high school teacher and a middle school teacher, for example. Do we cross-coordinate across the principals so that, you know, and I'll just pick a, a local, from my own view, if we have a band director who needs help in conducting, but we have another high school who's gone to four conferences on how to conduct, band director A shouldn't have to go figure out where to go. There should be some kind of resource where they, oh, you need help with that, yes, we've actually sent somebody here several times, this is a great, great forum, you don't have to go here, but you can go here and here's the information on it. Do we coordinate at that level?
Yeah, and so, you know, we have a couple ways we would coordinate some of that support. If it's someone who's new to the district, then a lot of those needs are going to be met through their mentor. And so that's often, principals identify mentors, but often when we have situations like you're talking about, someone like a band director who may be, you know, a little more isolated in their building, then we, they work, again, with those content coordinators to pair up across the district, or to find mentors in other schools, and we'll really work to find ways for them to do that. You know, again, with that specialized training, I've worked several times, as has Renee, again, with the content coordinators, to find opportunities for people who may have specialized needs. We have teachers that are struggling, are those sorts of things. So, you know, I mean, there's just always a lot of work going on to support people. You know, for instance, we were just talking the other day about, we've probably added an additional, I would say at least 20.
Yeah, we're probably closer to 200.
Yes, we've probably added 20 to 25 workshops, and a lot of those have been in content areas because teachers have had specific needs or have not felt like what the district's offering maybe is meeting those needs, or there's other things like you're talking about, so then the, we're providing targeted professional learning for them. So we try to balance though, because there are also things that we just know are good teaching practices and that we want every teacher in the district to be, you know, exposed to, obviously, like the work around safety and other things, there's things you want everyone to be able to access.
And I would think there's a hierarchy here, if you will, of, a principal ought to be able to say, if and you're in my building, you need to have these basic foundational things, safety is probably one of them, some other things like that, there's some basic, to be a good teacher, you need to have these things. But then the, the icing on the cake, if you will, or maybe it's not, maybe it's not the icing, maybe it's the core content, is this is my subject area, whether it's fine arts, whether it's mathematics, whether it's whatever, you know, I, I want to make sure we're drilling down enough on that so that, you know, frankly, I just don't want to be saying, we've got good teachers at Rockwood, I want to say, we've got great teachers at Rockwood. You know, so I get concerned when we talk about, yeah, we, we, we're focusing on the struggling teachers, I want to make sure we're, we're also focusing on the okay teachers so that they can be excellent teachers.
In Rockwood, I would say it's the other way around, I would say probably through that district and through the content is where our primary focus is, and then the buildings have, like, their piece that's within that, that they might need to have that positive school culture and climate that they want to create, but that in Rockwood, instruction has really always been the largest focus of professional learning.
Good. Thank you.
What percentage of professional
What percentage of professional development is handled internally versus externally? So going to conferences or things like that?
So I don't know that we'd have a hard and fast number, you know, Renee and I are former language arts teachers, so ask us for a metaphor or simile, and we're real good, but, you know, we didn't figure that out, but we could, and it kind of fluctuates, I would say. We try to, you know, Renee always uses the statement, economy to size, that with our large size, it often is beneficial for us to bring people in, you know, in-house, it also allows us, we never invite anyone in that we haven't seen ourselves, because we want to make sure that they're high quality, you know, and then I think to your comment earlier, we have a lot of high-quality people in the district, so you know, I mentioned those book studies and some of our other summer learning opportunities, we have a lot of Rockwood teachers leading those things this summer. So, you know, I would say the majority of the things we offer are kind of in-house, or they're provided, you know, but then we do, you know, there are obviously experts in the field, and often, sometimes hearing from someone outside of your setting is beneficial too, so would you agree with that? Like I said, I don't have an exact number, but I would definitely say that the majority of what we do is often created, we have a phenomenal curriculum team, we've got, you know, instructional technology people who are doing some great workshops on technology this summer, they've got a lot of expertise, we've got coaches who are offering workshops this summer, so we've got a lot of in-district expertise that we try to tap into first before we go outside.
Do the curriculum directors, I'm going to use bands since that was used earlier, but do the curriculum directors have budgeted amounts that they could allocate if there's a need that can't be fulfilled internally?
Yes.
Correct? Okay. And then my other question is, you talked a lot about surveying staff for what their needs are, what does the evaluation process look like? Because I think you guys do, I'm pretty sure you do a pretty good job of evaluating your professional development, evaluating the mentee-mentor relationship, what does that look like?
So I think that you guys probably just recently approved a purchase of KickUp, or renewal of KickUp, so that is, we actually went to that tool just a few years ago as, because it offered us the opportunity to get more like in-time feedback, and it really digs into, a lot of the questions are around implementation, so we actually have a lot of really good information that, you know, you can pull from that program about what speakers really cause people to reconsider their teaching, that, you know, what's the evidence that it's going to implement your practice? And then also, you know, that also allows us, if we get someone who maybe didn't impact a lot of change, and we know maybe not to move forward with that, so we evaluate that way, you know, that's a lot of it. Also, the micro credentialed process has really allowed us to kind of evaluate what's happening, because a part of that is providing evidence of implementation, and so teachers have to submit a plan, artifacts of things they're going to use in their classroom during the school year, artifacts of student work, how did this professional learning impact the students in your classroom? Because that's really what we want to do, you know, and again, I know Renee says it all the time, I believe that, you know, if professional learning isn't changing practice, and it's not impacting students positively, then we need to try something new.
We can add, you can add walk the data with that, and then also just triangulating that with student achievement data, so if there's been a specific implementation to, because of, you know, whether it's the, the climate survey, you know, we actually looked at, did teachers who went to this workshop, is there a climate survey? You know, we actually like looked at it at that level with the data department, so there, there's a lot of different ways that we're looking at that, long-term and short-term.
So we've had discussion in the past year, so we've heard a lot about the Rockwood Learning Council. Can you talk a little bit about the connection with the, with the PDC and the Rockwood Learning Council, and how that relationship works?
The Rockwood Learning Council is, it's the old curriculum advisory council, Rockwood Learning Council, the assessment committee, and, and also technology, all really put together into one. And so PDC through state statute, it is elected, those are elected members from their schools, and so they actually set the membership first. So PDC is set, and then after that, schools get there, and, and the curriculum coordinators fill out the rest, based on making sure that there is representation from each grade level, from each department, from each school, and across the district as well, and so, and that includes parents. Now, this year, Shelley Willett expanded the parent component.
Right.
Because we just had, you know, two parents in this big committee of teachers, and so she created a separate group where those parents can come in and really kind of focus on the needs from that level, and so that's been new, and that's been an expansion of Rockwood Learning Council. You know, the question that you, our substitutes have made some of our work difficult, it's difficult to pull 120 teachers out, we want to make sure students are first, and their classes are covered, and so those have moved to after-school and Zoom, and so it's really trying to find that balance. And same thing with the conferences that you asked about, I know that's a frustration that some of our teachers have, they want to go to conferences, but they've not been allowed to have subs for that, and so I know that we actually worked with Shelley and with human resources to work on a, a calendar, to be able to bring some of those in without impacting the classroom in a negative way.
Thank you.
One of the things that I want to mention, now you, you've talked about evaluations and quite a bit, when you do your evaluation next year, one of the things I'd like to see focused on is what impact it's having on student achievement. So all that you're doing somehow has to result in, teacher learning is absolutely important, but so is the student achievement, so can we, can we evidence direct relationship?
Yeah, and that's definitely been a goal of our department and a challenge, because often, when, you know, you have three teachers who go here and three who go here, then it's a little harder, but that's definitely something, yeah, because we know that the work we do has to make a difference for kids, that's where the power comes in.
You, you made a comment, I just want to clarify, that teachers want to go to conferences, okay, yes, I, I get that completely, but can't because of subs, is that because of budget, or because of sub availability?
The pure number, we just want to make sure that every classroom has a teacher in there, and if subs are covering teachers who are absent, we've had more absences since COVID, then there needs to be enough to also cover people at a meeting, so we don't want a classroom that's not covered because someone's at a conference or a meeting, and so that's been a, that's not unique to Rockwood, that is, all school districts are actually dealing with that, and so, you know, we.
I guess I'm not, I guess I feel you're not answering my question, is that constraint budget?
No.
Or subs? Or volume?
Volume, so we have a lot of subs, human resources has really been great about hiring a lot of subs, but there's a higher volume of teacher absences due to illness, and because of the higher volume of teacher absences due to illness, sometimes we've got class, you know, we have schools who are having to cover with teachers in their planned period and things like that, and so that's really what we're trying to do.
So it's the total number of absent teachers on a given day, week?
Yes.
Not necessarily a constraint of available subs or budgets?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Student attendance is not what it was, getting staff attendance back to where it needs to be, allows us to be able to deploy the same number of subs, right, differently, which could be more professional development. We need to do more to increase staff attendance and, and being there, the reason, our classrooms are at our best when we have our teachers in our classrooms.
I, I don't disagree, just trying to get clarity on what, what specifically is the problem, and the way, the way she explained it now gives me a different perspective of, okay, making up a number, if I've got 6,000 teachers in the classroom today, and I'm willing to have 300 of them out on any given day, and I've got 280 on average out because of health and illness absences, that only gives me 20 to work with.
Right.
I'm, I'm sorry, but unless we change that standard level of staffing, I've only got 20 to work with, you know, made up numbers, please.
Yeah, that, that's exactly it, there's just, there's a higher number of absences due to illness and other, than that we had in the past, and that's why there's fewer subs available for meetings and things like that.
Yeah, because if, if you told me it was budget, I'd lean over and look at Paul, if, if, you know, so that's, I just want to understand, you know, I can't, or maybe we can, maybe we can discuss how we can reduce teachers' absences to make them more flexible in the future, but I just want to make sure we're not going down a rabbit hole, give you a lot more money, and still doesn't change the, the outcome, because that's not the constraint.
And I agree with Renee, you know, coming back from the conferences and visiting with so many different districts, we are not the only ones, we heard the same message from so many other districts in the area, you know, and actually even outside of the area, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, so I completely agree with everything we're saying, I mean, one of the things in my own professional development journey, I, I would say the most beneficial professional development has been conferences. So one of my events is, you know, just like you were saying earlier, for the conference you went to, fantastic learning opportunity, not just from the seminars they had, but the ability to engage with other people doing the same function, you know, if I could wave my Harry Potter wand, which hasn't worked since I bought it, by the way, but that's a different story, I'd love to be able to say, every teacher can go to a conference every other year, you know, now what that would do to teacher attendance, you know, Dr. Kane would have a heart attack. But, you know, so that's just trying to understand.
We appreciate the board's support of our teacher professional learning, that's really coming through loud and clear in your questions, and that's really amazing, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you both, that was very educational to read through all of that, and even sparked some interest in ideas for some of the processes and things that our board is working through, so thank you for that, we might be in touch.
Thank you very much.
So that motion is that the Board of Education approve the master plan for professional learning as a fundamental framework for the Rockwood Professional Development Program for 2023-24. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes, thank you all. Next, I would like to welcome Paul Northington and Dan Steinbergi up. Could I have a motion to approve and adopt the 2023-24 budget as presented?
Show move.
Second.
Motion and a second, hello, Dan.
Hi, good evening, so we do have the, the budget for 23-24 to present to you tonight, so this is kind of an accumulation of the past six to eight months of work from a variety of people throughout the district, I'd just like to thank that's all involved in the process. I have a few slides here tonight that will kind of summarize at a high level what that budget is, we do have our full budget document that we prepare, we do participate in the, the meritorious budget award, and something the district should be proud of, we've received it for 23 straight years, and we intend to use that budget book and apply for that certificate again as well, so, again, just a very high-level presentation tonight, it mirrors what we have provided to you over the past six months, we met first in December, and then most recently back in May 4th, so the budget is developed based off those talking points and conversations that we had back in May, so. The first slide here is just kind of, just a summary, we've seen it before, of just kind of what our budget is comprised of, the different funds, and that's kind of how I've kind of presented the budget, the breakdown over our revenues and our expenditures, so we are, as part of our budget book, we are presenting a revenue budget of $329 million for the 23-24 school year, of which 268.2 million is from the operating budget, again, we've had some extensive conversations regarding the revenue sources for the district for the 23-24 school year, so, and the budget also includes our debt service, our self-supporting funds, child nutrition, community education, that's all comprised and included in the budget here, so. For our expenditures, we do have a budget of 314.7 million, again, kind of following the same breakdown of the funds, operating is 261.9 million, and then the variety of expenditures across the other funds, so we have a couple of slides here that kind of summarizes in total what the change in the fund balances are, so we are presenting a budget of 314.7 million for the 23-24 school year. This is a quick summary of our operating funds, and again, this is kind of, the last six months has been kind of the focus of our conversation, the presentations we've had before, so as we kind of mentioned in, back in May, we are expecting an increase to our fund balance on the operating side of about 6.8 million, we expect our 20, or, excuse me, our June 30-24 balance at the end of this time next year to be close to 85 million, and again, that's an increase of 6.8 million dollars here, so overall, total budget is, we're expecting an increase in our fund balance of 14.6 million, we expect our fund balance next June to be around 130 million, and a breakdown of the different funds here shown, and we kind of have a little reconciliation, as kind of mentioned, the operating side will be 6.8 million, our self-sustaining, we have some planned spend down, particularly in our child nutrition, as we've kind of discussed before, for some equipment upgrades, using some funds that we've accumulated over the past two years through the child nutrition department, and then once again, we are spending the remaining bond issue funds, we've had some conversations regarding bond issues, and we expect the 2017 bond issue to be fully spent by September of this year, we have some projects that are going to overlap into next year, and that's the reason why we, we currently are presenting a budget for the bond issue side, but that's just because the projects will be completed July and August, and by the time we spend, or pay the final bills of there, it'll be into the 23-24 school year. The debt service will increase 11 million, that's a, a large number, but that's just kind of follows our planned spending for our bond issue, so that's, that covers all of our general obligation, principal and interest, and that's really just more of a timing we're collecting for this year, and will most likely have a huge reduction in the following year, because that's when principal and interest payments are due in the following year, so that all follows calculations by the state audit office, we run our, our tax calculation through them, so it's more of a timing of when the funds are received, and then we'll pay for future obligations. So again, we have a total fund balance of 130 million, revenue of 329 million, expenditures of 314 million, and these are just some of the kind of the guidelines we've been following for this past year, and in future budget years, it's just, we have our fund balance policy that we're following to ensure that we have sufficient funds to maintain, because again, if we have conversations, the majority of our funding comes in in December, January, and that's to, to carry us through until the next time, so maintaining our fiscal stability as well as our AAA rating, and then we're going to continue to monitor the budget, so budget process doesn't really stop, we'll come back to you in September with the tax rate hearing, that kind of starts the process for next year, we'll provide, again, our timeline is to kind of start the process in October, November, have a budget update in, in December, and kind of follow our normal timeline, and we'll provide the board monthly updates beginning in November. So with that, I appreciate the support of the board and everybody involved in the process, and ready for another budget to be approved, so happy to take any questions.
Not in a question per se, but a general comment, I actually started attending board meetings last December when you started talking about this budget cycle, and just both the presentations you were giving then, and the presentations you've given since I've joined the board, I feel very well-prepared looking at this document to approve it, so my hat's off to both you and Paul, and your entire team for the work you do on the budget, I just want to say thank you, I have a good appreciation that Rockwood's taxpayer dollars are well-spent.
Thank you.
You took the words right out of my mouth, Bob, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, so that motion is to approve and adopt the 2023-24 budget as presented, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes, thank you, and I think you're sticking around.
I am, yeah.
We have just information-only coming on ESTER II and III federal funds update.
Yeah, so this is just an update, since the funding's been received, we've provided two updates a year, we kind of align it with our budget timeline, so in December and, and June, so this presentation is going to look very similar to what it was in December, and that's just kind of where we are with these funds, it's been two and a half years since the, the pandemic relief provisions from federal government that provided school districts with some funding, so we're essentially at the, the point where we have all of our funds that have been allocated, have been procured, and the projects are ongoing, or they will be ongoing coming up here, so this is just to give you an update, and not, again, there has not been a lot of changes since December, just some of the numbers have changed, just because we've been spending the funds and being reimbursed on there, so again, just a, a quick reminder that this conversation is on our two largest funding sources through the ESTER funds, so ESTER II and ESTER III, so essentially, we've been talking about two kind of funding buckets for the last two years, and this has been in place since December of '20, so everything is running through DUCY, so before we issue any contracts, or we enter into kind of procurement clauses, we get DUCY's approval through budget adjustments and their review and everything like that, so these are reimbursable grants, so we spend the funds, and then we get the funds in return, so all of our federal requirements are being met, so we have 11.4 million that we've been allocated, and we have a couple of deadlines coming up, and then we'll get to that here, and this is just kind of a quick summary of what these grants cover, these are some allowable costs, nothing on here has changed from the last time we met with you, and all the check marks essentially cover the areas that we've been able to address. First overview is ESTER II, so this is 3.5, and this is the one where we're actually kind of in the closing stages of this, we've had 3.5 million allocated. We've had 3.5 million allocated. The funding, or the expenditures are to be spent by September of '23, so here in a couple months. So now we're just kind of in the process of kind of finalizing some of the purchases. We have kind of a summary here of what we spent over. So again, these funds have, the Rockwoods had these funds since January of '21, so a little bit over two years. So a lot of these costs that have been there have already been spent. So a lot of our kind of preparation as we're going through the pandemic, technology, we focused a lot on kind of upgrading our cybersecurity access items to help our infrastructure here at the district for the network. We have student-staff mental health programs, and then we've also spent some funds on improving our air quality, as well as just some other general COVID response items on there. So as of right now, as we sit, all of SRR 2 has been fully obligated. Now we're just in the closing stage here. This just kind of provides an overview of where we spent the last two years, 1.2. This year is kind of closing it off, and so we'll have the full 3.5 million spent here by September 30. So SRR 3, 7.9 million's been allocated to the district here. So these are some general guidelines that we've been following through DUCY. We've been providing kind of our updates here. This update here kind of satisfies one of the requirements for community updates. Again, once everything is ran through a compliance plan with DUCY, and we've been communicating with them, you know, throughout this whole process. So we do have an extended timeline here, so we have till September 30 of 2024. So we have another year and a half essentially, or just shy of a year and a half to spend the funds. But again, majority of the funds have already been allocated and spent. So through this, we have a couple of large items that we spent, 2.3 million. So through these funds, we are required to spend at least 20% on accelerated learning. We are exceeding that, so at a minimum, we were to spend 1.5 million, but we're actually at 2.3 million here. And we have a slide here that kind of summarizes what some of those items are. A large portion of these funds have been put into repairing and improving school facilities, two projects in particular. One is the HVAC replacement at Ridge Meadows, so a full replacement is going on actually right now at the school. And then we've also been improving our HVAC controls to ensure that all of our systems district-wide are connected and talk into one system to improve efficiencies, energy efficiencies on there. We do currently at this point have about 700,000 that has not been allocated. Again, we have about another 15 months to spend that, and we'll be kind of engaging in some conversations here the next couple of months to ensure that those funds are being put into good use. Here's our breakdown of how we're going to spend. We're going to have, this is kind of our biggest year for these funds, we spent 4.2 million, and then we'll, we expect to close out to '23-24 school year. So we'll meet the September 30 of '24 deadline with spending the remaining 2.9 million, and that's kind of a breakdown of where those expenditures are going. So again, not a lot has changed since we last met with you and presented this information. These are some of the items that, and when we talk about the categories of responding to COVID-19 early on in the pandemic, when we had these funds, these are items that were purchased for there. We have some contracts to address mental health needs for our staff and students. They'll be continuing into next year. These are some of our accelerated learning opportunities. We have some math and reading interventions programs that have been in place, that assessments are going on through the curriculum department. We've been providing some stipends for before and after-school tutoring at the K through 5 elementary side for reading and math, and then some multi-tiered systems training for building levels. And again, all that is required, or is part of that 20% that we're required to spend through the funding there. So, and again, here's some technology items. Again, we've been really focusing on improving our network security, replacing firewalls, and just providing additional access points throughout the district. Indoor air quality, again, kind of mentioned just some of the HVAC projects going on, controls replacement HVAC system, and some softwares that kind of help facilitate and control all of our units across the district. That is the end of the summary there. I'm happy to take any questions. We do plan on coming back in December to provide an update. At that point, we'll really be kind of just talking about SRR 3 at that point, giving an update as where we are with SRR 2, but we'll be kind of in the closing stages with SRR 3 in December as well, so.
Any questions? All right, thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is the proposed agenda for the July 20, 2023 Board of Education meeting. As a reminder, just one meeting in the month of July. Any comments regarding that? Okay, and then final item on the agenda, could I have a motion to approve the emergency replacement of Wildwood Middle School cooling tower due to system failure? An authorization for the superintendent or designee to take all actions in connection with the replacement in an amount not to exceed $300,000.
Motion moved.
Motion and a second. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, yesterday afternoon, we were made aware of a system failure with one of our cooling tires at Wildwood Middle School. We have two towers. One, we became aware of yesterday afternoon. It's got some leaks internally. The system is original to the building that was constructed in 2001, so it's 22 or so years old. Time is of the essence because we're eight weeks from the start of school, and to find HVAC equipment that specializes in that short timeframe is a challenge. Bill Branson and his team and facilities have been on the phone nonstop since last night and today. I think we're finally getting some good news on a replacement unit. Initially, when we were reaching out to basically three firms that we've done business with and have some good experience with, they were giving us some leads, time of 12 to 14 weeks, which is well into the school year. Bill and him has since been able to find a solution to where I think we can get a cooling tower in in two to three weeks, and at a price that's a little bit better than what we were first learning. 300,000 would be worst-case scenario. I expect this to come in quite a bit better than that. We'll know a lot more tomorrow as far as the exact timing of it, but right now, we're optimistic that we can get this system in, in place, installed and operating before the school year starts. So things will look a little better this afternoon. But we do need to move on this fairly quickly.
Thank you, Paul. Can you talk about, just briefly, where these funds will come from to pay for this? We've heard in SRR presentation, we have other bond issue things. I know we're coming to a close, but I just want to hear your professional piece on that.
That's what Dan does such a good job of in the finance department. But we have set aside some funds, if you recall, about 1.8 million each year for fix on failure for these kind of unexpected issues. And this is a perfect example of that, where we can use a portion of those funds to fix these unexpected items that come up. So we've set aside some funds within our capital projects.
Paul, could any of that 700 SRR 3 money be used for this?
That may be something to look at, but again, speaking, and I'm going to speak for Dan because he's worked very closely with DUCY, that would require some communication with DUCY and amending our plan. That being said, we do have local funds allocated that would fund that. SRR would be something that we'd have to investigate.
Paul, I'm assuming timing has a big impact on where the funds would come from for this because it is something that needs to take place ASAP.
Exactly.
So determining that. How many cooling towers are there at Wildwood Middle School?
Excuse me?
How many cooling towers are there?
Across the district?
No, no, just at Wildwood Middle School.
On that particular site, we have two towers.
Two, okay.
So we still have one tower that's functioning, and it can limp along for a little bit, especially since we're in a reduced capacity. So the staff working in the offices does have the ability to get refreshed from the air. When the building is in full occupancy, one tower certainly can't carry the load, and you risk damaging that tower as well. So it's really critical that we get a replacement in there. So we have the two, and we have a little bit of redundancy there.
Yep, and I'm assuming the tower that is there and holding up the weight right now is the same age as the one that has just failed, yeah?
They're both original to the building.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, just to ask the rude question, going exactly where I think you may have been going, do you need to find two towers while you're looking?
I talked to Bill about that. I think we're okay with one, but it's certainly since we're replacing one, we'll probably keep an eye on whether we need to go ahead and do a replacement with the other one when the timing is appropriate.
Okay. I just want to add, I want to go back to our conversation in May, as we were talking about capital needs across the district. And Wildwood Middle School is not our oldest middle school, and by far not our oldest building in the district. And this is a living, breathing example of what can in fact happen. And so I appreciate the flexibility and the foresight for us to be able to fix upon failure, but we have to put ourselves in a place of strategic advantage and be much more thoughtful and proactive in getting ahead of these curves. Interestingly enough, it's a cooling tower and not a boiler, right? Because of course, this is when we're using the cooling tower, and replacement challenges are most definitely there. And so just like we won't replace a cool, are unlikely to replace a cooling tower in the month of January or February because you won't be using it, because you will be using a boiler in that case, it's, I, we really need to be very mindful, not only board, but our community. We don't want to get behind the curve on some items, and we cannot live without air conditioning in our buildings, we just can't.
Yes, thank you for pointing that out.
All right, so that motion is long. Here it goes. The motion is to approve emergency replacement of Wildwood Middle School cooling tower due to system failure and authorization for the superintendent or designee to take all actions in connection with the replacement in an amount not to exceed $300,000. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes. Thank you. Next up is future agenda presentations and events to attend. Hopefully you all have some time set aside with your families for some rejuvenation before our board meeting in July. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting.